All right, well, it's 12:03 and I'm gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. Would you all please stand for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I have a thought for the day. Good afternoon. David, our thought for the day is from Zig Ziglar. When you encourage others, you in the process are encouraged because you're making a commitment and a difference in that person's life. Encouragement really does make difference. And so I would, I'll go ahead and, and post our agenda just for a quick look see. See the things we're gonna chat about today. And again, we welcome our guest speaker, Tammy Kaufman and Assistant Governor Dave Basset. Thanks for chiming in this afternoon, Dave.
You're welcome, President Tim.
Thank you. So there's some happy thoughts that we like to start our meeting off with. It's not the sirens that are going by the high school at this point, unfortunately, but. My happy thought is, is, is kind of mixed in emotion. I think I've shared with you all about my 103-year-old grandmother who has been, has had a wonderful life. Unfortunately, she succumbed to COVID on Sunday. She has been living in an assisted care facility for 11 years. Actually, a place that she worked at from 1960 to 1965 as the head cook. And then came back in 2009 and became a resident. So her passing is, is, you know, certainly a blessing, but she left quite the impact on, on, on that rest home and the community and so on. And so my happy thought is for all the great memories about my grandma. And wanted to share that with you all today.
Thank you. Where, where was she living, Tim?
Colgate, Oklahoma.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a town about the same size as Gold Beach.
Wow.
And quite an interconnected family there. I mean, the family has been in that area for, you know, over 100 years. And mayors and sheriffs and school board members and teachers and firefighters, all, everybody like Gold Beach, you wear a lot of hats and.
Wow.
Yeah. How about some other thoughts to share?
Well, I guess I'm happy that at this time tomorrow, I will be on a Zoom call with the chancellor at MIT who is recognizing a foundation we helped establish 20 years ago for having donated as of a year ago, more than a million dollars to MIT and its various programs.
Very good.
A nice feeling. I have yet to see it, but apparently the great dome of MIT that was dedicated in 1916 had limestone components. And my fellow alumnus in Western Massachusetts is in possession of a piece of that limestone. That is the prize we got for, I guess, giving our money. But the best part of the program that we do is we fund the, the outreach programs for the School of Engineering that encourage high school juniors to spend time online or on campus at MIT, supplementing their high school education in STEM and qualifying them to attend schools such as MIT, Stanford and the like.
Good for you. Yeah, we hope to get a Gold Beach student in there sometime.
Can I go?
I have no qualms with threatening the program with a reduction of their funding if we had trouble. If we had someone who would apply.
Yeah, there you go.
Needed the boost, we would do what we can to make sure he or she, he or she gets there.
Absolutely. Mary, go ahead.
I'm really happy that Tammy Kaufman is our mayor-elect for Gold Beach. I'm not able to vote in this election, but she has my total respect and I think she's gonna be so great for our community. So thanks to all those that did vote for her. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mary.
Well, yes, congratulations, Tammy. But Mary, that begs the question, why can't you vote?
Because I'm not in the city limits.
Oh, right, of course. I forget.
This is Jeremy and I guess my, my happy thought, or yeah, happy thought is that as a librarian, I read surprisingly little because I've been way too busy to read, which is really disturbing. I used to read like one book a day. And so I'm happy that I've read like three books in the last two weeks. So I'm, I'm like doing a slightly better job. I had a few days off. That helped.
So Jeremy, are you gonna recommend those books? Are they good?
Um, well, I guess that, that really depends. I read one really bad cozy mystery, which I never read and I'd be happy to rec, actually, I will recommend that and I'll tell you why. We're doing gingerbread building contest. It'll be the third one we've done. The previous two were amazing events here at the library that brought a lot of people in. This year, we can't do that, but we're still doing the contest. The upside is, is that we've had such demand that we are giving away 50 kits to 50 different teams to participate and they will submit photos. And the contest is going to be judged by an author and it's the author of the book that I read. So her name is Ellie Alexander. And she's, she's a cozy mystery writer. She lives in Ashland, but she writes mysteries around baking and brewing. And when COVID hit, we had the entire, all the libraries in Coos and Curry counties had her lined up to do a community reads program and we had to cancel that. And we were trying to figure out who we might get to judge this contest. And we just decided to give her an email. And she said, oh yeah, I'd love to do that. So she's gonna be our celebrity judge.
Oh, fine.
The rest of my reading list is a little more on the dry nonfiction side, but if you're into that, I'll make some recommendations.
Thanks.
I've seen since the last couple of minutes, Morgan has joined us. Good afternoon, Morgan, Dr. Morgan. All right. Well, I did want to give, give a couple of updates about our turkey trot last week. Appreciate those of you that were able to attend or participate, even though we advertised it as virtual. I think we had about 10 people that actually came out and did some running slash jogging slash chasing their dog on the leash and and with that probably 12-ish bags of groceries and about a hundred dollars in cash that we took to the local Christian food bank and they were very much appreciative of that. I'm hoping Tara will be able to provide a kind of a closing report on that. But it was a good time for those of us that could be there. And I appreciate all the Rotarians who either ran or donated or both. These next two items are really more for the board meeting next Tuesday, but I wanted to have you guys start thinking about it. We had some preliminary discussions about how we could somehow do our holiday bottle auction, which is a traditional fundraiser for the scholarship program in lieu of doing a social and bidding on expertly wrapped beverages. We've got to figure out how we do that virtually. So come with some ideas next week, if you would please, as well. And I'll send some information out to the entire membership. We have a free $500 express grant from the district that we need to apply for by the end of this month. They're in three categories. One is around membership, one is around literacy, and the other one is around Rotary branding. My original thought is we would be doing some branding activities. But nothing has been submitted, so I'd like to have a discussion next week at our board meeting so we can make a recommendation to the club. And again, it's essentially, it's a one-page application with some goals and that'll be for $500. Speaking of grants, Carl, I like to call on Carl to share a thank you that we received from a sister club.
We, we, you may recall that we have been attending district grant meetings at which other clubs have proposed global grants and clubs in attendance have the option of chipping in. Several years ago, to give you an idea of how long it takes to get a global grant approved, we, we offered $250 from the Gold Beach Rotary Foundation on behalf of the club to our Medford Club who was looking for a grant to send a team, a medical vocational training team to Malawi. And that grant actually made it through the process and several weeks ago, I mailed the check to Chuck Root. And he sent me and on behalf of the club, a very nice thank you for that. The difference this year is the team going is, team is partnering with the local Red Cross in its training and the task is to train locals to be proficient enough in medical care to nudge aside the witch doctors who are still providing the prevalent amount of medical care for the people that reside in this country. It's, I don't know the country that well, but if those of you who watched the, the last word with Larry Lawrence O'Donnell in 2010, I believe, he started a charity to provide desks for the schools in that country that has produced over $6 million worth of desks and scholarships for the young women who typically don't get the opportunity to go to school in that country. So it's, it's a country that Rotary has been involved with as well as others and it's, it's really nice. And hopefully this year, when the grants, district grants committee resumes its activity in January, we'll find another project that we think that people in Gold Beach would like to support. The $250 was frankly $50 contributions from five people, four of whom were members of the club and one was just a member of the community.
Thank you, Carl. All right. Are there any other announcements for the club? All right. Well, with that said, our guest speaker probably doesn't need too much of an introduction, but but I join Mary and the rest of the club in congratulating Mayor-elect Tammy. And we're very pleased to have you join our club today as a guest speaker and perhaps as a member as you get your feet under, under under you as you accept your new responsibilities. But with all that, really happy to hear about your plans for City of Gold Beach and your continuing work in leading the council. So I have, I'm not sure if you're gonna share any slides, but I've enabled in case you wanted to share. But please, Tammy, welcome to Gold Beach Rotary.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate everything Rotary does and I appreciate you inviting me. I always enjoy speaking with your group. The pandemic has, you know, changed everything for the city as well as everybody else's life. And I could tell you unofficially that there are central Curry cases and it appears to be in the younger groups, which in Curry County is defined as under 55. And we can't really announce any employers, as I understand it, public health can't say, you know, this employer has an outbreak until they get to five cases to protect confidentiality. But I'm finding that the new OSHA rules are really bogging down staff. And I'm sure it's happening to other organizations. When you get a positive, you've got all these new rules to follow. And of course, nobody can say anything. They can't tell you who it is, what it is, just that, you know, you came in contact with somebody. So that's, it's really difficult. My, my point is that, you know, potentially we're all exposed. So we need to be careful and diligent because we do have such a large vulnerable population in our area. And now to talk more about city stuff, I officially take office on the 15th of December. And Gold Beach, in case you didn't know, has a weak mayor system, which means it's more of a figurehead. It's kind of like a council president. We run the meetings and control the agenda to some point. But it's, but it is a leadership role to facilitate problem solving and help the council get goals achieved. And that's what I plan on doing. My plan in January is to go fully remote with meetings until the pandemic is over. And so we're gonna be creating a process to make sure public comment can be given and make it easier for the public to interact with us. I'm, I started a couple of test runs and I think I've got it working now. I'm gonna have a meet with the mayor remotely, kind of like a meet with the coffee with the mayor, but it won't be in person. It'll be virtual. I just need to find the right times that people want to do that and I'll set that up. And plan on working with the council early next year to go over what council goals are and then set up priorities and a calendar to measure progress to make sure we actually are making progress. We tend to get so busy with stuff that comes up that we forget that we want to move stuff forward. We need to be more like the library and get stuff done. And we are looking for volunteers. We have a lot of positions that are open and have not been filled. So we have two planning commission positions opening, open now. It's a five-member board. We prefer people living in the city limits, but it is possible if you live in the urban growth boundary. And if you don't know where that is, it goes up to the old mill site on Jerry's Flat out into Waterburn and Rogue Hills. And I think most of Hunter Creek has been annexed. I don't think there's much urban growth boundary out there. So planning commission, it can be boring. It can also be very challenging. Right now, we don't have a lot of applications coming through, so they're not doing a lot, but the rumor is that we have some applications that will be coming. So it'd be really nice to have a full planning commission ready to go to do that. It's hard for three people to make the decision of five. We have one budget committee position open. It's probably the easiest position in the city. We typically get our packet about a week before the meeting. We have one meeting, we approve it and we move on. We have a really good planning, budget committee. Our laypeople ask a lot of really good questions and I always appreciate that. We could possibly have two meetings, but typically it's done in one. So it's, it's not a huge time commitment, but it is a lot of numbers. So if you don't like numbers, it's probably not your thing. You do have to live in the city limits to be on the budget committee. Probably more exciting for this group is we have four open urban renewal advisory positions. And I would really like to get people that belong to one of the districts that are impacted by the program. That would be like the port, the library, the school that are being, losing a little bit of funding to help fund urban renewal. So I would like people that are in the, in, in the know of those bodies to volunteer to help be on an advisory committee to help decide where the money should be spent and how it should be spent and how to improve the area.
Who's on that committee right now, Tammy?
Nobody. It's the city council. We have no advisory board members right now. And we can still function, but it, it would be nice.
I know that at one point in time, either you or Jody or somebody approached me about whether or not the library might have or somebody who would be interested in that. And I believe one of our board members did say that they would be interested. So and I think our board kind of discussed that internally. So if, if you have questions about that, feel free to reach out.
Yeah, that'd be great. I'd love to have somebody from the library because the library was involved in the original plan. And so I'd like to see them continue. Because the, the whole goal of urban renewal is to make the tax base larger in 10 to 20 years so that everybody benefits and that we get rid of the blight in the city. So it is an important position. And we could use all the help we can get from smart people. And then of course, I'm going to be leaving my city council position. So we have to fill the balance of that term. You do have to sit, live in the city limits and it's only a two-year term. So if you want to try out being a city councillor, it might be a good way to, to give it a shot. I did want to talk a little bit more about urban renewal because I think it is important for Rotarians. I think it's more interesting than some of the boring things that cities do. And, you know, we did help fund Ellensburg Theater Company improvements. We did some street scape and beautification with the Gold Beach Main Street. And we provided a loan for a small-scale housing project so far. We would like to do something with some of the vacant lots in town, maybe some of the buildings that are falling down. See if we can't come up with funds and a partner to, to make that work. The more partners you have, the better chance you have of getting a good project down. Of course, my dream is we'll have our own face rock creamery, not literally face, face rock creamery, but some sort of business that is local. Will provide jobs and a place for people to go and do things. I don't know what it'll be though. We gotta figure that out. See who the partner is. And to get a little bit more of the information, in case you don't know what urban renewal is, it's, it's, one of the ways they talk about it is tax increment financing. So every year taxing districts hit 3% more. And so in that district, every taxing district is losing that 3%. It's going into the Urban Renewal Agency. And we do that because it's a way to finance fixing blighted properties. And that's a technical term. Nobody likes that term, but blight could be a building that's not being used, the highest and best use. It could be a vacant lot. And as you noticed, our commercial district is pretty, pretty blighted in some areas. The urban renewal goes basically from the visitor center to the property just north of where the Sunset property used to be by Rogue Outdoor Shore and across the street. It goes up to the library. And so it's mostly Highway 101, except for going up to the library because we wanted to do some library projects. Because the library bird was really smart and said, put us on the plan. So one of the, the problems with urban renewal is it takes a long time for the money to come in, but the good news is that we can borrow money. So if a good project comes up, we could actually come up with the money to do it. I encourage everybody to reach out to me if you have a problem, a question, or you have a solution to, to a problem we may not even know about. Please, and I don't always know answers, but I can help make connections. And I'm gonna end the chat and I'll also give it to you my email and my phone number. I like it if you're, if it's city business to email to my city email because that's considered a public record. I know a lot of you are my friends personally and you probably don't want things in public record that's personal. But it's basically my name, tkaufman@cityofgoldbeach.org. And we got me a new phone number at 541-373-2888. Any questions?
Hey Tammy, that pink building that was the, I don't know, newspaper, was a bank, was a candle shop? What can happen to that?
That might be a project that might be fun, depending on, on the ownership and if whoever owns it would want to be participatory. That is definitely one of our blighted buildings.
Yeah, people ask about it all the time and there's always a homeless person sleeping in the little front area and garbage and yeah.
Is there still a shopping cart there?
Last time I drove by, I didn't look.
Yeah.
When we first moved here, Carl, because we all wondered what a fabulous building that is and, you know, who owned it? And didn't you find, Carl, that there was somebody who owned it who was not interested in selling? Wasn't interested in doing anything? Or something like that with that candle?
At the time, at the time I looked at that, when I was working with the county's planning community development group, the owner had sold it to an LLC to develop, subordinated his purchase money mortgage to their lend, their production mortgages. They went bust. And there was, I couldn't find a trace of what happened to them. And when the information I developed was given to the then-owner, who I think was out on what people were calling Squaw Road, Cedar Valley Road, he was unwilling to hire an attorney that it would take to clarify his title. But yes, that, that building does have a great potential. And at some point, I thought the city had some leans on it that hopefully we're going to provide a road for, a way forward for it. The other thing that I think, you know, there are two things happening and the issue of what's gonna happen on 101 in this, within the city limits will be stay four lanes Speedway or will it become a three-lane urban way, business road. And the other one is of course Coos-Curry's effort to bring, to compete with Spectrum and bring high-speed fiber optic service to everyone in Curry, in Coos County. I tell, you know, I, the last meeting I think I filmed of yours, Tammy, was when they did their presentation. And it, I got an email saying that they had decided to move forward with that. And I think that's something the city could really have a tremendous positive impact with. So, you know, and, you know, I, I enjoy filming your meetings and I'm not, but I'm not gonna miss spending a Monday night at City Hall if you go totally Zoom. It is a way, you know, that the public can participate more in, in your meetings. And if, you know, if anything, very few people do that currently. Once you couldn't, you had to keep the door locked during the meetings. But I wish you well. It's, it's, I think it's gonna be an exciting four, is it four years?
Yes, it's a four-year term.
So you mentioned the replace, your replacement. What's the process for that in the timeline?
So it's actually for all city positions, the mayor appoints and the council approves. So it's kind of like the president appoints somebody and the senate approves. It's, it's similar to that. So we kind of have to all agree to, to move forward. But I don't expect tons of applications, but we might, I'd like to get a few.
I, I was wondering, you know, what, one of the, the city council one races, you know, ended within two votes. And I didn't know if that was a consideration for two people who were equally interested in serving that there might be some. Anyway, if either one of them had applied for the vacancy and all of that, so.
One has already applied and I believe the other is going to apply. And, and other people are welcome too. And it is, that's how I got started. I filled a position from somebody that moved out of town. And it's a great way to get started because it's not the full four years. It's a shorter commitment.
Yeah.
And it's a good way to go and, and we'll definitely be considering the, the candidates that, that ran but didn't win.
Yeah.
And boy, doesn't that prove that every vote counts.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. Tammy, as I recall, you are a Gold Beach graduate.
I am.
So are there, are there, I guess selfishly, are there memories you have of school that maybe things that used to be and, and but aren't now or? Or is maybe either just a personal opinion or something that you see any partnership with between the district and the city on any joint projects or kind of a two-question when there?
I feel so bad for the schools right now. I'm really proud of the Hive program. I don't know how you guys are trying to do this in person and then Zoom, and then it's got to be nuts. I feel so bad. So anything the city can do to be supportive, we'll try to do that. I know sports is an issue. It's always been one of the biggest extracurricular activities that students have had. And that's limited, I believe, as well.
It is.
But, you know, they could become more involved in the library and read more, right, Jeremy?
Well, it'd be nice if we could let people in. Actually, right now, we're close to the public. We've got a board meeting on Friday to figure out how to go forward through the month of December. But yeah, I, we, the library has a really, really great relationship with the school. Tim's been a big, big piece of making that happen. And I actually think that, you know, leading into COVID, we, the Hive program's gotten a lot of attention. But leading into COVID, without Hive, I felt like we were on track to do some really positive things and have some really great programs going on. And I just want to get beyond the pandemic so we can get back to some of that in-person stuff. But I, yeah, I think I can imagine, like, I'm stepping in here too because I did have a little bit of a question about parks and kind of the corridor between, it's not really a corridor, but the patchwork of properties between Riley Creek, the library, and the city park. And it's like almost we've got this like ability to have some kind of a connection between all of them, which I think would be really cool. And partly because we've got more traffic theoretically from the school to the library. It would be nice to figure out some ways to have completely safe, protected corridors. But anyway, no, I think, yeah, we're definitely working to do what we can to support the school and fill in gaps and hopefully create a richer experience for kids.
That would be a great project to work on to make that corridor.
Sounds like something that Rotary could help with, I would think.
Possibly, I think there are pieces of it. I think that, like anything else, there's kind of a patchwork of properties that have to be owners that need to be communicated with and some things that might need to happen to facilitate that because there's not like a 100% connecting set of public properties at this point.
Are you talking like sidewalks or a sidewalk?
Sidewalks and potentially a legitimate crossway through between, is it Leith Road and Fourth Street? Because we've got, our property extends down to Fourth Street. And so you can get up to the library from there. But right now, there's kind of a pathway between the Moose Lodge and a private property, which nobody tells people they can't walk on it. But it would be, my thought would be down the line for the future to have that sort of, that right-of-way clarified and kind of legally protected and then maybe potentially a sidewalk. So it's not a muddy pathway, but.
Yeah. I think it's a great idea. Because if you come up around Leith Road, you get around that dangerous intersection for children to be on the sidewalk there. So that makes sense. And I think you and I talked about maybe improving the parking down on that side anyway and doing some lighting and a pathway up.
Right.
And that could be a urban renewal project, that part of it.
That particular project is one that is in the library's strategic plan to do. And we will definitely be looking for partners to help us make that happen, so.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Tammy or? All right. All right, well, again, in conclusion, I think we're all excited to see what's next and continuing the good things the city's doing and then getting out of the claws of COVID and seeing how we really can expand all throughout, so.
Yeah, we provide the water so you can wash your hands 10 times a day.
There you go. So with that said, thank you again, Tammy, for coming. And you're welcome to attend any Rotary meeting you'd like and continue to think about how we could partner up in some community services as well. We do have, as you've probably heard from Jody, we received a district grant to help refurbish the Kids' Kingdom play structure. And I think we've got it down to do a restaining project when the weather permits. And then when you're, when the city is allowed to reopen the park. So we can kind of do a grand reopening at that point.
President Tim?
Yes, David.
Mayor should be rotarians as well, as always welcome.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay.
Tammy, one quick question. Knowing that, you know, the park, the kids playground is closed for kids, assuming we had a long spell of good weather, it would not be closed to us to go and work on it, would it?
You could probably work that out with Jody and Will, how to do that. It might be a good time to do it because you know the kids won't be on it.
Right.
Yeah, that question came up at our last council meeting, why it isn't open. And the guidelines for the cleaning, we just can't do it. And other places are just putting use at your own risk. But our risk manager just doesn't want to take that much risk.
Yeah.
Because our insurance won't cover pathogens.
Right.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, related to that, I just sent letters to both Representative Smith and Senator Hurd about in the special session to consider some type of relief for COVID risk related to, you know, the cities and school districts. And because right now, we have none. There's no available insurances. And so hopefully, there'll be some consideration during a special session prior to January.
You might go ahead and send that up to Speaker Kotek as well. And maybe Senator Courtney, get it on the other side as.
Good idea.
I agree because I also wrote a letter about risk. And because some states are actually doing that. They're passing laws that you can't, there's a limit to how much you can sue for, or you can't sue at all, as long as somebody could prove they did their due diligence.
Right, right.
Tim, just for the sake of the group, I'm wondering if you'd be willing to give kind of an update on what the outlook looks like for education in the Central Curry School District.
Sure, absolutely, be happy to. So I know there's a lot of confusion or not necessarily misunderstanding because I think it's in the governor's attempts to make it simpler and to provide local control, in some ways, it's just made it more confusing. So I'll do my best to give that update. So you might remember on October 30th, the new metrics came out. And when those were announced, Central Curry was in the green zone, which allowed us to open our schools. And so we had already targeted November 16th to be that starting date. And in order to also comply with Ready School Safe Learners Guidance about the number of people that can be in a room at one time, the hybrid model was what we designed. And so since November 16th, with last week being a non-school week, so now we're in our second week of having students at school. 50% of them are in the morning from 8:15 to 11:05. And then the second group comes in at 12:30 to 3:20. And our attendance rates are above 95%. Kids are excited about being back to school. The parents are, obviously, the teachers are as well. I think it's a little bit more normal. It's a long day for our teachers because they're actually teaching the same content twice, but they're also doing it in classes of, you know, five to seven to 10 kids in a classroom at one time. Each week, we get, on Monday afternoon, we get the new metric, and it's now based on a two-week look back. And so this past Monday, sorry, the Monday of Thanksgiving week, we had gone from orange, which means we're pretty close to going back to remote learning. We went actually back to yellow. And then, and what yellow means basically for Central Curry is status quo. Since we had opened during a green time, we can stay open in our current model. This past Monday, our two-week look back put us back into the orange zone. And which means we are in consultation with public health. One of the considerations in talking with Cherie Ward is that the high majority of the cases are occurring in South County. And so when we're trying to determine community spread for Central Curry and for Port Orford, where there have been limited cases, that might be a consideration for us to remain in our model. So we will finish this week with, as we currently are. A new metric will come out next Monday. If that metric is still orange or yellow, we're still where we are. If it turns red, then we have a week to switch, which would mean the last week of school before winter break would go back to remote learning. And then more than likely, we would keep that going for, I would ask the board for their consideration of how long we prolong that CDL, knowing that like the Thanksgiving holiday, there'll probably be some holiday travel, which may impact the positivity rates. So in order for that red zone to occur in the county, there needs to be either a 10% positivity rate or more than 60 cases in the last two weeks. So this week has been lighter, knock on wood, so far. And so hopefully, we can maintain where we are. I actually did a quick interview with Channel 12 this morning that'll probably be broadcast tomorrow. And I think we are one of the only school districts that have high school kids coming on campus in the viewing area. I think Lakeview might, but other than that, no one else has high school kids on site. So that's kind of an update where we are on the metrics and schools' operations. Still continuing to feed kids at their homes. We deliver twice a week. So that's students from ages one to 18, or children from ages one to 18. So we're doing about three, almost 2,000 meals a week, 1,800 meals a week. And very well-received. I've been out on a few of the deliveries and, other than getting absconded by a couple happy dogs to have company, families are pretty, very appreciative of the continuing service, just free for the family.
I've got a call coming in, and I've got to go, so thank you all.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Bye, Jeremy.
All right. All right, so anything else for the good of the order? All right, well, board members, we will see you next Tuesday at noon. I'll get that notice out to you with an agenda and be ready to make some decisions. Tammy, thanks again, congratulations, and looking forward to the 15th for your inauguration.
Thank you.
And I'll see you on Monday.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, everybody, take care.
Bye-bye.